September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting the Acushnet Board of Selectmen.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do a pledge of allegiance. All right, in your meeting, packet is minutes. Check is still. The typo with O R R, but it's not O R, should be old colony. Twenty-third, twenty-fourth minutes, gentlemen, are any other additions, corrections, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, on the minutes of February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, page two, the very bottom, it just says that Ms. Costa asked Mr. Kelly what he was using for projected new growth in two thousand twenty-four. He said he's using two hundred and fifty, it looks like two hundred and fifty dollars, it's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Just for the record.
A motion to amend that to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gary, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, page eight, at the top, it talks about Mr. Gasper asked about the double polls of Mr. Kelly to review his solar companies, that they are paying for those polls and not the taxpayers, I want to be, add a little bit more clarification, what Mr. Gasper was talking about is regarding street lamps being switched over to the new polls and our fiber relocation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Other than that, I'll make a motion to approve all minutes as presented with the changes that were just made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, very good. So item number one, Pam, we do not need to approve this warrant, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so we're going to withdraw that. You have to do, you'll call in the election, the Board of Selectmen do not have to approve that warrant. Scrap that, next item is the Town Administrator Search Committee Charge of Duties. We have Pam Levante, Mr. St. Gilles, Mr. Rosendies, Mr. Dakin, Mr. Brown. First of all, thank you all for your service, everybody's been sworn in?
Everyone's been sworn in.
All right, great. As you know, you have a number of resumes that the screening committee has whittled down to seven to do interviews. Some other, we posted a couple of weeks ago, a few other resumes came in, you're welcome to take a look at those if you want to add them into the mix. From what I saw, we got a great candidate from California, a great one from North Carolina, whatever, so to you to decide if you think they should move forward. And so now it's us for us to kind of share with you our thoughts of what we would like for you to look at as you're interviewing these candidates, Mr. Gasper, Mr. Inkley, I have my own thoughts, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues to offer that up. If you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think you said it, hit the nail on the head, and I have full faith in everybody on this committee to make accurate and informed decisions and present us with the best possible options.
All right. Gasper.
So I've also looked at resumes, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and it's not an easy decision to make, and you guys should at least forward a minimum of three. The ad has been re-advertized again because the pool that we have, some of it, some of those applicants are older and, you know, not older in age, but the time that we receive them has been a couple of months gap, so some of them might have already have other jobs, they might not be interested anymore, and you might not be able to complete that mission, that's why I asked for the ad to be rerun to try to see what else we can bring in. Most of you all know how this community operates. Mr. Dakin and Mr. Brown are former selectmen, they definitely get how the town operates. Mr. Rosendies been on the commission, Mr. St. Gilles active, and Ms. LeBarnie as well. Twenty years serving as, eighteen years serving as town clerk, she gets it. To me, you're going to have somebody that has some background there in budgeting, understands employment, workplace issues, D P W is a big pot, it's our third biggest budget in the town of Acushnet. So infrastructure, some expertise there, public safety, obviously, police, fire, things like that, have some kind of a background there as well with staffing and the operational aspect of that. I think most importantly, when the Board of Selectmen have been trying to hire other people in the town, we focus on, I know at least I do, and I'm responsible on behalf of the board to interview, you try to look at a person's character and try to figure out are they a good fit for the community, right? We've had past situations where we've had individuals where, you know, they might, they might put like this Superman on their resume, but they get here and, you know, they heckle and jibe, so try to do your best in looking through the individual, that's why I think it's important for personal interviews to figure out who these people are and try to figure out, in my opinion, will they work well with others, right? I think that's, that's probably the biggest thing, is some experience in public safety, D P W, finance, and things of the like, and then you have to look at that individual and say, are they a good fit? You think they would mix with our, most importantly, you have to palm their heads, right? That's really where it comes down to, so other than that, just try to do your best and we'll see what comes to the board, and not, we'll continue running ads, I guess, but we'll figure it out. Do your best.
Yep, and I echo that, you know, combo platter of what they've said, you know, for me, perspective, it's finances, we just spent, you know, an hour and a half talking about a big project, it's all, at the end of the day, it all comes down to finances, you know, I think the board, years ago, got a little flexible with residency, and I'd love to know if the next town administrator would be willing to live in Acushnet. I think that would be, you know, something, you get some skin in the game and you're here all the time, you're going to benefit from some things, so I think ultimately, finances is what is really important. Mr. Brown?
I think my question was answered a minute ago, but we're not expected to give you three to interview from this paper, we're going to get an opportunity to, you know, interview these people and talk to them at some point.
Oh, yeah.
How is that setup going to work for us, that's my question.
So Mr. Kelly will work with you guys, and what I would suggest, amongst the five, somebody selected, be selected as a chair, and then Jamie will help, and Sidney will be scheduling the interview, and then your job is to narrow it down to three finalists, and then recommend three finalists for us to do final interviews.
Thank you, good, because I agree that, you know, what's on paper is necessary.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
I don't want to recommend anybody based on what's in the file.
Hundred percent.
If I talked to somebody and looked them in the eye and asked them, like you say personally, what do you think about a town, do you want to live here? As you say, candidates from across the country, why are they interviewing, are they coming here, what's going on? I think, you know, especially you, David, know personally that last time I hired someone important in town was the police chief, I said, are you going to come live in town? And he moved back into town for us, I think it's very important to be part of the community if you're going to have a role this way, so.
Anybody else have a question?
Now, Mr. Chairman, how stringent do you want us to be, there are required elements to the job and there are preferred elements, how stringent do you want this team to be?
As I, as I put in the memo to Bob and Kevin, there's nobody that's a thousand, nobody is, it's every requirement, like every benchmark, I think you've got to come up with who you feel would be the best candidate. Like I said, if we could go to A I and punch out the best candidate, we could probably do that, but can't, right? So somebody's going to have a deficiency here, but is going to be really good here, so I think maybe you come up with a scoring grid or something along those lines, and I know last year, you're a numbers guy that way, so maybe you can come up with a score sheet, I think Jamie, you probably could come up with a score sheet saying, these are the things, finances, D P W.
Well, native nature.
Yeah.
Most importantly, we want, we want this committee, because you're all townies, that's, that's the way we talk about each other, right, we're all townies, we care about the community from our heart, right? And we want what's in the best interest moving forward for the community, and you have to have that leader in the town administrator's position that's, that can keep the team together and keep everybody moving forward at a regular pace instead of the barre downs, the arguments, and the fighting back and forth, we don't want that. We just need somebody that's a diverse person in all aspects, when you look at it, I mean, Bob, you do understand that, you're self-employed, Mr. Dakin's worked for Verizon and probably interviewed hundreds of people over his career, Ms. LeBarnie, she's, she's a, came from the private sector, Mr. St. Gilles is in the private sector, Mr. Rosendies in the private sector, I mean, you know what it takes, right? And collectively, you five chosen people, I believe in the bottom of my heart, you should be able to whittle that list down, and perhaps you just go, we don't like anybody, what do we do? Then you have to bring that back to the board, right? That's why I asked for the ad to continue to be run, because you don't know what else might be out there. And again, if you have whatever you have, seven we'll call it, some of these people might already have jobs elsewhere because of the two-month, three-month time lapse when they submitted resumes, right? The other important part that I want to stress to you is, when you bring each individual in for interviews as a subcommittee, the first thing you have to ask them is this, if, well, once you've done interviewing, if you feel comfortable enough, but you should ask everyone this, if you're a finalist to present to the Board of Selectmen, are you willing to have your name on an agenda in the Board of Selectmen's meeting? Because if they say no, they're out. It's illegal for us to put their name on an agenda for an interview without their permission. So that's, that's an absolute dead drop question to every candidate, regardless if you feel good about them or not, just make it habit, ask everybody that comes to the door when you're wrapping up that interview is asking that question. If you are a finalist, are you comfortable being placed on the Board of Selectmen's agenda as a finalist for the team's position? If they say no, they're out, and that's going to hurt, again, with the people that might be out, with the, what, you pretend you only work with seven, versus the people that say, no, I'm not comfortable, you might not be able to give us three people, four people, right? That's how it works. Well, thank you.
All right. We don't want to put an artificial timeline on it, but we'd ask that you try to move things along as quickly as possible, because the clock is ticking with Mr. Kelly, who's been nice enough to help us out, so good luck. And if you have any questions, please let us know, but to be honest with you, we'd rather not talk to you until the end, and I think that's fairness, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more thing from the committee, so for you folks, when you have your first meeting, to start talking about candidates and things of the like, you're really going to give, if Sidney from our offices is responsible to make phone calls and line up the interviews with this committee, you folks need to figure out what the best time of day is to do interviews and communicate that, so that when you are doing it, if you're going to do these screenings at five o'clock at night, six o'clock at night, again, Mr. Rosendies is a working man, I know Mrs. St. Gilles is a working man, he does have flexibility, Mr. Brown, you own your own business, but you, guns are blazing and at work hot all day long until four, five o'clock, I don't know what your schedule is, Mr. Dakin, he's retired, Ms. LeBarnie's in her office, it's not like she's sitting around, you know, he and Bon Bon's waiting for something to happen, she's got a very busy office, so I think you all need to talk about when's.
When you're done with us, we'll have Pam come over and we'll, we'll put it together.
Yeah.
Great, we should get, there you go. Thank you. There you go. All right. Thank you, guys, guys, girls, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Next item, we'll go quickly, Chief Farland, on the opioid stuff, what do you got?
Gentlemen, we received some correspondence over the summer from our law partners at K P Law in regards to some updates and new litigation settlements available to the town related to the opioid crisis. The town's been active in these for several years dating back to Chief Gallagher, who started this, and as such, may be de facto appointment for this project upon his retirement. So there are four motions that we had Sidney write and put in front of you that allow the town to participate in these new litigation settlements and the town to recruit some more of the available funding that is out there. So just need those, those to be approved, and then I can make the proper notifications to the various vendors.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, just ask a question, I'm pretty sure I asked a couple of years ago, all these funds go into the regular opioid fund that can be dispersed, but it can only be spent on opioid-related?
Correct.
The, the, there are certain restrictions that the settlements through the courts have, and then our lovely Commonwealth restricts them even further. We use some of this funding to purchase some cardiac monitors for our ambulance system, update the current equipment. There's been a lot of discussion whether or not that's going to be a continued use for them or not. It varies day to day depending on who you speak to at the opioid commission. But it's, it's mostly for prevention, treatment, and aftercare, so I do have conversations regularly with Officer Cathcart, School Resource Officer, to be able to try to put together a program for the middle school, we can use funds for that, we are, you guys are familiar with the agreement we have with Fairhaven Initiative through the Health Collaborative, we also have the availability to participate in some of their programs, which also gives us access to some of the regional funds as well as our own, so there's definitely a use for it, and it's all, it has to be declared free cash, and then, sound me like we did in the spring, we have to reallocate it to the opioid fund as well.
We've got a bunch of motions in front of us.
I'll make a motion to approve the Purdue plan.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the Government Entity Settlement Agreement or G E S A release.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's your carries?
Motion to approve the additional defendant settlements.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve the Sando settlement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's your carries? All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
All right, next item is a note sent to us by Brad Fish, our Veterans Agent, we didn't see Brad here, but that's okay. So, yeah, but anyway, the bottom line is, I saw Brad and we were just checking in on him, I wanted to check on with him, see how things were going, if he's liking the job, he loves it. One thing he did raise, it's kind of a testament to Brad and his character, he says, look, I'm here part-time, these are the hours I'm being paid for, I do work more hours, but I just want people to know that, you know, if I'm not in the office, it's not because I'm not doing my job, that I'm just a part-time employee, and he just wanted us to know that, you know, he's concerned about that perception, I said, look, you give us more than you actually are getting paid for, and we're very appreciative of that, but again, he just wanted us to be aware of that, that dynamic, and, you know, he does a lot, I mean, he is, the work he's doing is really incredible, so Brad, keep up the great work, I just wanted, you know, for a wire motion, I think we need to give the Board of Confidence and to keep him doing what he's doing, because he does a great, great job for us, we're really blessed that happened, so.
Chairman, Brad Fish is a phenomenal V S O, I know that I was instrumental in this, Inkley actually helped out in the conversation as well to etch it in stone, but I've known Brad Fish for several years, he's a very good friend. More importantly, he's an extremely great V S O officer, so I don't think, I've never heard anybody talk bad about him, and I can tell you right now, I would defend him and his character a hundred percent, because I would never let that happen to Brad, Brad, you're right, he spends exorbitant amount of hours running around doing different things, whether it's flagging cemeteries on Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and things of the like, Labor Day, doesn't matter what that means, doing, he's always doing something, he spends, I think, like thirty-five hours in the State House dealing with that kind of stuff for veterans, and I do know, I speak with a lot of veterans, I have a lot of friends that are veterans, and they all love Brad, so to you, Brad, kudos for everything you do for our veterans, and God bless you.
You know, we go through a budget cycle, if there's stuff we need to do to address what he's doing and get the resources that we should, I'm sorry to cut you off, Bob, I'm sure you said.
And, Mr. Chairman, you know, we both spoke exactly how I was feeling about Brad. Brad is probably one of the best things to happen in town of Acushnet in a long time. The fact that he was concerned with how we felt about it speaks volumes as to his character. Brad Fish is an excellent human being, and I wouldn't question a single thing he did.
All right, thank you. All right, very good, next item, Scott Daggett, Lake Street Improvement Committee on behalf of them. As you know, gentlemen, there's a lot of work that was done this summer with Chief Coffee here as well. Gary, if you want to just grab the seat, get part of that committee, Jimmy Souza had helped out. But Scott, why don't you just give us kind of a recap of the work that was done, what you see as the next steps that need to be done, and I can share with you some conversations that I've already had with the city.
All right, so if I may, I'm going to read to you an email from Jeff Cortisoe, which was on August fifteenth, so it was just after the project had, first phase had finished. So Jeff says, in total, I would estimate approximately six hundred yards of material was removed from all three ponds. I think that is the most that we have ever removed in one location. The north pond had significant growth near the street and along the western edge. Some of the water levels were too shallow for us to get into, some of the areas had virtually no water at all. The northern section around those homes was densely packed in, but they were able to put a big dent in that area and also able to get some of the water flowing, so he's referring to the far north end of the north pond. He believed at the time that by removing some of the mill foil and the invasive weeds would be able to foster some better flow coming in from the Keene River into the ponds. The south pond also had the same story along the road and the eastern edge where it was the heaviest. The cove area next to the street had a large amount of dead biomass that we were able to remove. We did get to the southern section by the fish ladder for a few passes, I know we could do more down there if we had closer access point to offload. So he's stating that he would have been able to have made more of an impact on the far south end where the fish ladder and earth and dam is if he had better access, because of the weight that would be in the hopper slows the boat down. The small pond to the east was very well suited for the excavator, we were able to remove the floating islands in the sections closest to the road, we were also able to tackle some of the bigger ones a little farther to the north. We were able to get the water flowing on the left-hand side, as you know, as you're looking north. We were able to remove the fragmites along the edge of the ramp, I think definitely opened it up for us to use. With the help of Jim Souza and the D P W, we were able to speed up the process of the removal. The D P W came in with a backhoe and dump truck, as fast as they were bringing the weeds in, they were removing it, they were a huge help throughout the project. We were all very impressed at how quickly the town workers and neighbors were eager to help. We're not used to that, normally, everyone looks the other way and has excuses. Acushnet residents and employees are the example of what I would want to see in my own town. It was excellent to see them working towards a long overdue resolution. As far as going forward, if you would have us back next year to do a similar scope, I think you would be pretty far ahead of it. I think some more time in the excavator could be a huge help, the combination of harvesters and excavators next year would position the ponds in great shape for a maintenance program in years to come. We are really looking forward to working with the town of Acushnet again, if you have any other questions, feel free to contact us. So from what Jeff's experience is, I think it really, you know, resonates, you know, the type of people that we have in this town, so a huge thank you to Dan with the D P W and Jimmy Souza, who did a lot of coordination with Jeff. Initially, when we did this project, we thought that the scope of work was only going to be along the roads, but to our surprise, Jeff expanded that greatly. He impacted areas along the roads, and since he had plenty of time available, hit other areas throughout the three ponds. So what that did was, it kind of threw us into a little bit of a tizzy, because we had to figure out, when he was working at the far north end of the pond, he wasn't going to haul that stuff all the way back to the boat ramp. So luckily, with Mr. Jimmy Souza and Dan Menard, we were able to coordinate, get trucks out there so that we could offload this stuff into a front-end loader, dump it in a truck, and take it right to the storage site. So all in all, with, with the help of everybody involved, I think it was a huge success. I've always felt that this first phase is kind of a feeling out kind of thing, to see what works and what doesn't work. There are some things I think we can improve on next year, which I will discuss with Jeff when we get to that point. But I think overall, from what I've been hearing from many people, many people are very happy with the results. I'd like to have Gary at least give you an example of how he feels it impacted the pond he lives on since he's a resident on the pond.
First, I want to thank you, gentlemen, publicly, first time I've been in front of you, it's been a pretty busy week, but it's okay, it's learning a lot. As far as the pond, I've lived on the pond for probably about twenty-five years now, and when we first moved in, I literally walked down to my shoreline and fished right off the shore, and it was no problem. Over the years, that's had to stop, I could fish off my dock, but not the shoreline. Then at a point, I couldn't even leave the dock with my boat, and that's the way it's been the last three years. I did not expect Jeff and his crew to get that far down on the pond, but the way they explained to me, explained it was, they need to do a circle, and continue to circle rather than stop and backing up, and that takes too much time, they want to have more time on the water, so they were able to get further down the pond, and I've noticed a huge difference. It's not as pristine as it was twenty-five years ago, but according to Jeff, the more you tree and hit these ponds, you can get back to that level. I do think another applicant of them coming, another round of them coming next year, and then figuring out a maintenance program would probably be the way to go. Obviously, we need to figure out the funding to go that route.
So, gentlemen, as you know, we talked about legislative delegation, but also, you know, begs the question, if you don't own the body of water, City of Bedford does, so is there a rule to continue to open up the piggy bank for that, and say this, I've talked to Mayor Mitchell personally about it, I know these gentlemen have talked to various city councilors, and I think, you know, we'll have to make a decision if we go forward with, see if we can acquire the body of water, you know, from what I understand, and talking with city officials in Bedford, that it's a little to no value of them, to them, it's not considered a drinking source, it's just, do they have the bandwidth to actually put together, you know, a process, a legal process to do that? So, you know, I think we'll have to decide, you know, if we can go forward with that and how we can get them to move forward as well. But if we can find other pools of money from the state, you know, and work it with New Bedford and their, their team, then we should continue to do that and raise awareness, you know, but we'll have to gut check as to how much money, more money of taxpayer money would be put into it without actually owning it, but I think to chase money through other sources would make sense, and maybe get New Bedford to cover the next round. So, anyway, so good, good work, and we appreciate what you guys have done there. See, see, some folks from the growing community, I don't know if you're here for that, I saw your eyebrows raised when we were talking about it, so I don't know, you're the, I'm seeing arms folded, so I don't know if you're happy or.
No, I know what you do, as long as you don't put pesticides.
We're not doing that, so we've already crossed that bridge, no pesticides, no pesticides, no pesticides, so we want to make it better for everybody.
I might mention that if you take over the pond, you're also responsible for the dam, and that could be quite a responsibility, over the years, probably thirty years ago, I guess there's a Department of Dams up at D E P or something, and they said, you have to cut all the trees off there, because if one uproots, then it could breach the dam, that kind of thing, so that's something else.
Yeah, it's something, you know, we got to look at all of it.
Now, weren't they going to talk about the dam itself down there with the fish ladder and all that? Are you going to mention something about that?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear what you got to say about that.
Yeah, so eventually, we're going to address that. So that, that topic came up when we wanted to drop the water levels in the pond, so that the, well, we wanted to drop it temporarily because we wanted to have the process be more effective. So if the water level were deeper, for example, one of the gentlemen that's on our committee owns a piece of property on the other side of the pond, and where he, where his boat ramp or where his dock is is a little bit deeper, so since it's a little bit deeper, the weeds won't come up to the surface as much as they would probably on Gary's side where it may be a little shallower. So the results over there were a little bit different, because the machine could not get deep enough to pull the weeds. So I contacted the city in the Bedford, the Water Department, tried to get permission to have the water levels dropped just temporarily so that we could be more effective in pulling the weeds. We were denied because of concerns of people downstream and also concerns because of the stability of the earth and dam. I went out there a couple of weeks ago, had got permission from the people who are now running Keith's farm. I looked at the fish ladder, I looked at the earth and dam. In my opinion, as an engineer, I don't see any issues with that earth and dam, to me, it looks pretty stable. I spoke to Chief Farland, who just acquired some paperwork and some information regarding the dam, he'll be forwarding that to me when he has the opportunity to do so. We're going to make sure. We're going to make sure that if this town does eventually take control of those ponds, that we're going to look at the dam and make sure that the dam is stable and not going to be an issue.
Well, I just got to make sure that I have enough water to irrigate, never enough because it gets low.
Yeah, it's flood.
What did you, is there a new herring run down there? Is that what's down there now?
So, there is a new herring run.
Well, they can't let too much water out of the damn pond. That's why it goes down. That's why so many weeds come out.
Somebody comes up there and pulls the goddamn plants, just like that. Who's in control?
So, the plant's a padlocked and the city in the Bedford has control of the padlock. Now, when I went down there and I looked at the spillway, there's only one board. And that board is only maybe eight inches. So, it's like a two by eight. So, it's not much. The current water levels that were out there were probably three to four inches below the top of that board.
You're talking about in the, in the herring run of the old dam?
So, there's no, so there are no boards at the herring run. What there is, is there's a, there's a stone spillway, which is just in front of the herring run. And that stone spillway is what controls the depth of the water in the pond. So, if you pull the boards at the spillway, you're going to allow more water to go downstream.
You find all spring and everything else, the water's nice and high. But when we get droughts like this, the water's, it's borderline for us, you know, as far as being able to...
So far, so far this year, I've had to move my section off of an old stump, onto an eight-inch block, onto a six-inch block, onto a four-inch block. And now it's sitting on the hot pan. I can't get it any lower.
I've had to put an excavator in like an hour and a half.
So, what, so what the people from seeing the underwater did do is they cleared a lot of the invasive weeds to the far north of the north pond where the Keene River flows into the pond, hopefully in the attempt of allowing more water flowing.
Instead of running right out to the other end.
Yeah.
Now, you're talking, you said that if you lowered the water, you'd be able to get more roots. And I watched those machines go over there by whites and they got stuck in the mud trying to get those weeds out. If you didn't have that much water, they couldn't even get anywhere near where they did. And you didn't get within 200 yards of us on the other side.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why he addressed it. And that's why Jeff addressed it in the email, that there were some areas that they could not hit because it was too shallow.
Right, so raise the water, then you could get to some of these areas.
Get to a lot of the weeds, that's true.
And you drop it, it's all mud.
It's six in one hand, half those and then the other.
All you're doing is beautifying right there by the road.
Do you, do you raise the water and yes, you're going to be able to pull some of the weeds in some areas, but then you're not going to be able to pull weeds in the other areas because the water's too deep.
Now, how many weeds does it pull and how many do you just break off and prune? So, they grow better?
I have pictures.
I'm waiting to see what happens next summer, you know.
I have pictures ready. We're pulling it from the exact same place and it's still...
And when the pond is so low and it lets the sunlight down there, the weeds just grow like that.
Okay.
From my opinion, I've been there 50 years.
Do you guys want to be on the, on the committee?
No.
No.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's no perfect solution. If there were, we would do it.
Look, I don't care if people are...
There isn't a perfect solution. Leave it the hell alone.
You can get a boat.
Yes. Have you guys tried talking individually? I don't mean that disrespectfully, but I didn't hear what either of you just said. And if there is a solution, I think it's beneficial to hear. But you can't talk over each other.
The solution is leave it the hell alone.
I just think that's an awful lot of money for what a little bit they did. That's all I'm saying. The taxes is paying for it.
It was a, it was a pilot project and that's the purpose of this. So, yeah, Jim, what do you got?
One thing I can say, I spent a lot of time with Jeff. A lot of time with every different part of the North River, South River, the small pond. When we were up the north end and Jeff was working up there, that is going to end up being marsh. That's what's going to happen. We're going to lose these ponds. So, we worry about not having enough water or too much water. That's what's going to end up happening.
In what, 400 years?
Another point to keep in mind about what's going on up there is there are no more bugs allowing any fertilizer or nitrogen to go into the pond.
What I'm saying, it was still unbelievable. They were pulling up root masks this big. There's spots where you couldn't even go over a canoe. There is spots where you couldn't do nothing. It's going to end up a marsh. The smallest pond has areas where you can actually walk on and probably tee off a golf ball if you want, right? And that's what's going to happen to the whole pond if we don't do anything, right? So, you say 400 years. I was there with my granddaughter. I hope someday my granddaughter gets to play there with her grandkids, right? We really want to keep the ponds. We don't want to say let it turn to marsh. And that's what's going to happen. And that's my own opinion and that's talking and working right with Jeff.
All right.
So, that's all.
Thank you, guys. We got other stuff on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. All righty. We got a request for a senior tax pro, we're going to give it to the mayor across our desk annually.
Motion to approve as presented.
Who's second? I was in favor. Hi. Caris. Next item, gentlemen, was, we got here, maintenance truck. I know town meetings, the GAF meeting has been involved with this. We had an article. I think just we want to make sure that come before the board, you can get three, at least three options to consider. But I'd like to see it happen sooner than later, I guess, to make sure that we're ready to... Before we know it, it'll be snow plowing season and...
It's easy, it's easy to buy a truck. It's hard to find the right truck, right? For, for the applications that we're using. I try to explain that to our maintenance guys. And, you know, a 150, you know, half ton, probably not the ideal for you. You could put a blade on it, but suspension wise, not, not the greatest option. So, you're now you're in the 2500 class. I already told them I'm not looking to buy a quad cab so you can put nine million people inside of it. It's a maintenance truck, you and another person, but an extra cab would be nice. Trying to find that in that $45,000 up to $45,000, they're out there. Some of them are a haul's way away to go look at. And then, you know, in my opinion, I'd be more than happy to do it. I bought EMA. I didn't buy it. The townspeople bought EMA, a truck, probably 10, 15 years ago. I went with Mr. Jerry Bergeron, who was the EMA director back then. And it was way they had him forward and we found a great truck for a reasonable price. And the truck is still in commission today. So, there's a lot that goes around it. And, you know, I'm trying to, trying to do our best, but there's only so many good ones out there. And sometimes it is not within a 30, 40 mile radius where you go hunt them down and take a look at it. Well, I'm doing my best every day. Every other day I'm on the web trying to see what else is to do. And I got some contacts in different dealerships looking for stuff for me.
I want to, the only reason why I put it, I want to make sure it's on the agenda, that we identify a vehicle on the back on the agenda because I want to, you know, not repeat the errors of the past monument, a purchase like this. Obviously, the board should have final approval on it. And that was it. Just didn't appreciate it. Next item, conservation commission. A while ago, we asked Mr. Kelly to dive in to the conservation commission. We had some issues there. And we wanted to make sure that we have a plan moving forward. So, we asked Jamie to look at some of the structural stuff, but how we handle the volume and so on and so forth. So, Mr. Kelly, are you prepared to do that?
Well, what we first did was look at how the conservation commission was established. And that goes back to 1962 town meeting. And then we, Ms. Labonte and I verified that the official records of the town did not reflect what actually happened at town meeting. So, we corrected that. And so, and then we discussed it with town council. And the general laws allow you to have a commission of between three and seven members. And right now, you have five members on the commission. I think a workable number is five rather than seven. To change it because the article established it at seven, you will have to go to town meeting and amend that article, which is Article 12 of the annual town meeting on March 10, 1962, to become five members. According to town council, the membership, the expiration date of the members that are now sitting will hold true unless the board reconstitute by removing each member for cause that is not up for reappointment or there is a vacancy. Right now, there are seven slots. Five are filled.
Right, so we've got two, essentially two vacancies.
You've got two vacancies you can eliminate. Of the five slots, three are set to expire in 2025.
So, let me ask you this, Jamie, and I don't know the answer to this, but when it comes to the conservation commission or any other appointed board, I can't get into elected stuff, but, you know, attendance is really important. And is that something that we would have to, we put that in as a requirement of the board that you're allowed three absences during your tenure or something like that? Or come up with some number? Because we've got to make sure that people show up.
That is, if the board, it's within the purview of the board if, according to town council, if an extended amount of absences have occurred. That would be cause for a vote.
All right, that's fine. I just think as we go forward, I don't know, gentlemen, how you feel about reducing the number from seven to five and putting an article at town meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I would actually support that just based on our struggle to fill those last two slots. We've had multiple appointments and multiple resignations. A lot of the times, I don't know if the people that signed up understood. There was a couple where they straight up moved out of town. But we've been sitting at 200 seats for a while now. And five members usually show up. So, I would, I would, I would support five members personally.
Yeah, I, I believe under the statute, the commission right now, it's different from, for different commissions and boards, but I believe under some statute for conservation commission, if you're minus two, you're able to go with the five remaining and then the quorum would be three. That's how the conservation commission is currently operating with it. So, it's kind of the way it is right now. And I'm all for five members versus seven members.
So, then I guess we take a motion. I guess we can deal with that when we get to...
When you get to our request.
Okay. Next item, Jamie, I think you were talking about like staffing. I know I talked to Mr. Souza.
The board cannot continue with the amount of work and the fact that not only is it doing conservation work, it's doing stormwater regulation to not have professional help. Now, whether you have a part-time agent, whether you use some hybrid situation, you're going to need at least to attempt to fill the professional conservation agent position. And right now, you've got a principal clerk that's staffing the commission. You've got, very recently, the board has put a minutes clerk that is dealing with the number of minutes for various committees, not just this one, and taking care of the situation with getting all the minutes done. And that can be reexamined in the future when all the past minutes have been prepared and reviewed. But to have one principal clerk for the conservation commission, which is also, the stormwater bylaw was transferred to, from the planning board to the conservation commission. You need professional help and you need the peer reviews of the engineers, Mr. Madden, Mr. McHugh. And I see I hit a capital then instead of leaving the number the same for MS4. But the two peer review engineers have to be there to support. And I would advise this board to look at doing an advertisement that starting salary is dependent upon qualifications and experience. We're just advertising, see if we can get somebody.
Gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fine with, for the conservation agent. But I, I think of Mr. Kelly, for the record, when we were doing budgets, I had the concern about the conservation agent six months ago. And he hasn't been gone that long. And I asked for you to change the budget in the conservation agent's salary line item to say conservation agent slash contractual services for this point. When the commission needs expert help, outside help, we could be drawing off the conservation agent's salary because it was now defined commission agent slash consultant services. So, if that budget's been properly recorded, the conservation commission absolutely can start expending funds and calling up an engineer and saying, hey, I need some help on X, Y, and Z if that's the case. And they always have at their disposal is 53G account, which is paid for by the applicant, which is obviously the preferred way to go. But there are certain situations where the commission's going to need some background expertise. We have our MS4 permitting engineer that's on hand. You can use him. He's already technically part of payroll with all the articles that we do. So, there's plenty of resources for conservation commission to reach out to and get some help from. So, you know, I would, the chairman's here right now. I just said what I said. Mr. Souza, you know what's there for the budget?
Well, Kevin, we take in any stormwater. We do not deal with that. I don't, you ever look at the stormwater accounts, which I know you have, right? For us, it's easier to just say, okay, we're sending that out to peer review. So, the stormwater is pretty much kind of like runs itself per se, right? Because it's not something, I actually have someone putting a roadway in. I told them that if we do their stormwater accounts, prove it to us. Well, they gave me a 57-page report and I just said, okay, now I got to put it to peer review. So, I sent it to GAF, excellent, bill's going over at Forest. They'll get back to us. So, the stormwater, we can kind of like self-ride. The biggest problem I have is the site visits during the weeks and everything else and trying to take and have that engineer with the conservation commission, them discussing what's the best way to go, what's going on. I've been, like the other day, last two weeks ago, I had 190 emails, right? As a volunteer, that's a lot for me and for me to try to step up with it. So, we do need that person that I can talk to too when I have a question before a meeting. And also someone that can talk to the engineers and say, hey, listen, that can't even be discussed, that or whatever, give his opinion. So, it might take some steps away from the board until we get to the meeting. And I just really think we need that, somebody in the office to help us. The 53G, it's really hard to tell somebody who's putting an RDA in to say, okay, 53G that. Or even an NOI that we see the, we see the order of conditions that they're almost out of 100%, out of the buffer zone, but they are going within NOI because they have to, so within the buffer zone. But the 53G that, 53G that is even for a single resident, I don't think...
That's why I'm talking, Jimmy, and I want to spend only talking about this, right? Because the answers are already there in front of us, right? I just, I just outlined the answers to it, right? We have an MS4 engineer at any given time. If you have a concern, you can call him up and say, I need a little help with this. You, we have our office. If you need to scan things in an email, send them over or whatever it is. Can you please review this? But don't do it 12 hours before a meeting. Try to be considerate, 48 hours or he's got other things to be doing, right? Hopefully, that'll work out to get you out of a bind. And I agree that we should be filling the con con agent as best we can, right? Within what we think is an appropriate budget to do so. We had $31,000, whatever his budget for, we have to go up a little bit. I'm fine with doing that. Am I going to pay somebody $16,000 for a part-time job? Never happening.
And I understand that.
Right? So, there's plenty of resources for you to go after. I just don't think you've been told what I just told you now. So, I hope that'll help you and you make that, those phone calls. And he can take that deduction out of MS4 engineer and things of the like as part of all of our stormwater, right? The impacts will...
Hold on, real quick, gentlemen, hold on. Sorry to do this. These guys have been sitting here for about Hartley Street. What's going on over there? That's your question, right? Dan, if you could chat them in. Yeah, yeah, I was trying to get you. Sorry, sorry, gentlemen.
So, one of them is Conoco that I can reach out to.
Our MS4 engineer is Conoco engineers, right? Kevin McHugh's the lead guy. He's got some guy that's down here that's local. He's been doing some bond inspections. We've made some changes for our town's MS4 engineering permit that he filed on our behalf with what we've done down at DPW. And he said, I'll call, I forgot the kid's name. He said, he's local. I'll have him run over and take a, do some inspections. He'll file a report, give it to me. Okay, well, if that guy is closer than where Kevin McHugh's... Okay, well, if that guy is closer than where Kevin McHugh's at, or Wakefield, or wherever the hell he is, then fine, maybe this kid can help us out with doing certain things. And he submits a bill that we'll pay for, that's it, we'll figure out.
But the thing is, like I said, stormwater solar fields, they're not really easy. They're peer review it, peer review it, and it's on their guy.
Like you said, the little Mickey Mouse ones, you know what it is, way up front, ship it off. Give them a week to look at things, give them, give them time to talk to them. And, and send a recommendation in writing to the commission, because it's not your job to make decisions based on, for the commission, it's the commission's job to say, we don't feel comfortable with it, we want it peer reviewed, let it go out to peer review, right? That's not the chairman's job, it's the commission's job. There's certain things that you might look at, you can say, hey, I share this with them, the town's MS4 engineer, he's comfortable with us doing X, Y, Z, how do you feel? It's, you know, it's not something that we wanna burden the resident with, you know, the 53G account. We can take 500 bucks and have our engineer do it and have a nice day, no big deal. He's okay.
Sounds good.
So what's the board's view regarding Conoco?
I, I, I think, just like we've been doing the last couple of open positions regardless, we should still advertise, because we might find the right candidate. But I agree with what Jamie said as well, listing it as salary based on qualifications. I still, I mean, budget wise, it's still a half-time position. So I wouldn't wanna advertise, similar to what Mr. Gasper said, for a full-time position. And at least we have the option of getting resumes in and seeing if there's any qualities. And at least we have the fallback plan.
So I, I've talked to Mr. Kelly about that, Mr. Chairman, in the past, is sometimes when you're having a difficult time filling a part-time position, we'll use this as an example, sometimes it, it hurts us by putting the salary range, right? Leave it out, and just do what Mr. Kelly just said, and say, based on previous experience, blah, 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 blah. And let people come in and talk to us, right? And feel them out, see what they want for a part-time position. And maybe you just say, you know what, we can make that work for this person, the expertise that we need, right?
One thing I'd like to ask is, any of the old resumes, is it, do you still have them? Will we can look back, because there was actually one girl that was really, really good. I know that Mr. Mitten was picked, but she was like the close runner, and I think she would have been better. But I don't know, but I'm still saying I think maybe we should look at it.
We'll look around, we'll, we'll post, and then we'll see.
Yeah, I think we need to post.
Oh, I agree. You can post, but I agree with Mr. Souza, because I remember, oh, it was the prior, prior agent was hired. There was a female out of Rhode Island, extremely impressive resume, but for some reason, she wasn't brought on board either, Mr. Souza. So I mean, we can go into a file, maybe we still have that file, we can dig up some old folks that are, not again, not age-wise, but old folks that have been applying over the years, that have been applying over the years and taken, maybe you could just make some phone calls and say, hey, we're reposting the job, I don't know if you're still interested, could you reapply?
The discharge board is not more than willing to help in any way I can to do it.
Excellent, sounds good, thank you. So this is a motion, it's a motion to post for a conservation agent, half-time, part-time conservation agent, salary commiserate with qualifications. So, second. All those in favor?
Alright. Thank you, guys.
Next one, gentlemen, is requests that came in, I think we're just gonna hold off on this, I'd like to.
Alright, I'm trying to see, the Town Council on this, and I'd ask that if it passed, so.
Okay, next item. Sydney, you wanna go get Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, Dan, how's it going? Why don't we take, before we get into like sewer and water rate stuff, if you wanna go into the paving requests and the Hartley Street morning side, let's just go through the stuff. Some paving requests, is that?
The Hartley one, that was the guy, so I just kind of went over that.
Yeah, what's going on over there?
I actually, EverSource was gonna go in there and actually wanted to pave it, they just called me last week. But that road, we gotta kind of go in there, I gotta reshoot all the grades, that's gonna be regraded or tied into storm drainage or do something over there. So again, I gotta get out there, I told them we'll probably get there in, within the next couple of weeks, I'll get over there and I'll talk with them guys, and I'll shoot all the elevations. But I'm assuming that road's, it's really gonna be regraded, so it's gonna be dug up and redone, to be done, right?
We put, we put the asphalt in, and it wasn't shot properly. And then Mr. Santos has some water issues sitting on his property because the road's a bit too high, right? So what Dan's saying is, he's gonna go in there, rip that road right off. EverSource is gonna go in, once we regrade, shoot it for grades, and put some drainage in to help out Mr. Santos, he's out from flooding out, he'll tie into it, let a storm drain on NICE, or go into, back to some wetlands. I, I prefer going into a storm drain and letting it go there, instead of all back and swamping on somebody's backyard. I don't know how much water is, if it's gonna have any back in, but that's y'all call behind. So, but we need to get it done. Because Mr. Santos has been on my tail. And I am a little bit guilty about not getting back to him, not getting back to him, because I talked once, and apparently I, I don't feel like I should be saying the same thing 10 times. So, and I know you're busy, so it's your fault. But we, we definitely need to go take care of that issue for him. Especially in Winter Town, the way the water sits and freezes. He's, you know, it's not safe for any resident to be out there at the mailbox, slip sliding away. So we'll try to bang that out. I know your schedule may be a little long, but it is a small piece of road.
Morning side out.
Mr. Chairman, I actually was trying to put morning side out on the agenda for signage. But in the meantime, I did speak with the same residents and discussing signage, so they brought to my attention, and this was just to let Dan know, because I sat down with pretty much every resident on morning side in regards to a separate issue. And they've requested that we at least look at it to see if there's something that can be done about the very end of the street. Anytime it rains heavy, it floods out, and also that it hasn't been paved in a long time. I consider, I drove by morning side every day of my life, and I never even thought to drive down it because it's a dead-end street, where unless you live on it, you're not gonna drive down it. But I did wanna relay the residents down there, their concerns. And they're saying this, definitely getting to the point where there's some, some deep ruts, some potholes, and some drainage stuff going on. And because I technically didn't need to put it on paving, you didn't know about it. But if you do, and your travels happen to go down there, if you could come up with a good idea, maybe put together a plan and take a look at the drainage aspect, towards the end of the road where it meets Beckham. Just to see if there is a solution.
So it's on Beckham, oh, in the dead-end pocket.
On Beckham, right at the end.
That's where they have the problem.
Correct, yeah.
So flooding, flooding, basically at the intersection of morning side to Beckham.
Correct.
That's where the flooding occurs, but I think what Miss Inkley's saying, I'll go out tomorrow, Dan, if you wanna take a ride out.
Yeah, it's supposed to rain tomorrow, and we'll go look at that road.
I seen it on here, I wa, I didn't have time today, I was, I was with the assistant town accountant trying to deal with water and sewer rates for quite some time, and I feel bad, she's still here tonight. She was trying to do some training, and I was like the little birdie saying, I need this, I need this, I need this, I need this, and I kind of disrupted her afternoon, so to Miss Velasquez, I apologize for my interference in your day today, but it was very helpful what you did, we'll get to the water and sewer rates. So we can go out, look at the condition of the road, right? Because it's, right now, we don't know what it is, well, you can measure it while we're out there. Reclamation, milling, we don't know where, if that's a chip seal though, so we can look at all that, put a number together, bring it back to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, because of the initial reason for this, I would ask that when this does come back in front of the board, that we also put it back on for signage. And I can review what I was trying to get at with that, but seeing this is not on the agenda, we'll deal with it.
Signage is one of the DPW, we just talked about it.
So essentially, concern was travel. They've requested some speed limit signs, and they've requested some go slow children signs with a new building that's going up over there. Part of our authority is to reduce street speed limits. I was gonna recommend to reduce it to 25, but that's, once again, something that we have to do under.
See, I thought, I thought all the side streets were kind of 25.
So, we have the, we have the ability, as a voter selection, to change the speed limits to 25 or 20 if it's deemed a safety zone under a Chapter 90 provision. But by default, under Chapter 90, based on the street size, population, it defaults to 30, actually. I said five miles an hour is not that big of a deal, but sometimes when people see a two, peace of mind tells them to slow down a little bit, but that would actually have to be done by a board vote for us to reduce the speed limit to 25. I did confirm that it is a 30 mile an hour street, based on the state law. But it was just something I was gonna bring up.
So, we're basically saying right now, there is no postage speed limit on that side, on that street, right? So, again, two means three, three means four, five means six, right? You know, when you give me a six, I'm going 80, right? It, it happened, they changed the speed limit in, on state highways in the Commonwealth, I don't even know, I mean, decades ago, from 55 to 65, and now everybody drives 80. When it was 55, we were driving 65, 70, right? And then they changed it to 65, now everybody's going 75 or 80. So, again, I think it's, it's something now, a sign.
I was in Montana, I was going.
Each direction, whatever, one here, one down there.
I don't know if that's something we can, you know, talk to the police chief or anything about. I know, you know, we got a book at the office, and, you know, stop signs, speed limit signs, they gotta kind of be in certain locations, and they gotta kind of be, I know lawyers have field days with this stuff, if it's not in the right spot, and this is.
Right height.
Put right high, all this stuff, so it's a lot to, I just, you know.
I'm 100% willing to go through the process with it. I did make a promise that I would follow this through, at least to find out if there's any things that would hit us as roadblocks with it, but I have no problem.
Perfect.
Go through all the.
They just have contact being directly, that's fine, alright? Putting up's the easy part.
Yeah.
Alright, Dan, Rock Street and Matapoisette Road, sign it, what's that all about?
Okay, the Rock Street, I, I, that just came to my, that just came to the office last week, I guess. I guess somebody was concerned, the way that, the way it, I look, this has been like that before I got here, so. We've never had an issue with it till now, I guess, so I don't know. Because Bitu comes off of Slocom, and it goes out to Hope Street, and that's a one-way coming down. Rock Street is a one-way coming up, so you kind of can't, it's almost Rock and Bitu are almost straight across from each other. So you can't come, Bitu, you can't go down Rock, you either gotta take a left to go around, or even Rock, you can't cut through Bitu to get to Slocom. You either gotta take a, a left on Hope or a right on Hope. I mean, that's the way it's always been. Again, I don't know if that's something the board or, you know, the.
You're talking about the U coming off of Hope Street, right? It's a U, so Rock or Bitu would be going this way, it goes down.
Yeah, Rock is actually off of Hope.
Yeah, 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 and then the little two side streets, right? And you can't go in from one where the titleist property is, the storage units are.
Yep.
Because that's a one-way down this way.
Yep.
Is that what this is saying, put a one-way do not enter on the bottom where the titleist property is?
No, there already is a one-way do not enter on Rock right now, so that's saying.
You wanna put another.
The other one, like you said, Bitu's a one-way going this way, and then you gotta do not enter, but it's a different street. I don't know if they thought this was the same street or something. Then it would be, you'd have one-way going into a one-way, you know what I mean, type of thing? But it's a totally different street. So I think that's what the concern is, because one's going one way this way, and the other one's coming a one-way this way. You come out to Hope, though, you gotta cross over Hope, so, you know what I mean? You can't just go straight across onto Rock. There must have been an issue with it back in the day, again, this was way before my time, I, I.
Well, I don't understand what, what, what's being asked of us.
On one's, one end, just, so there's little, two little side streets like this, that may be 150 feet long, if you're lucky. And then Rock goes down like this, it runs parallel to Hope. And somewhere in this conversation, it's, the people are going down this way because it's a two-way on the two side streets, but not once you get to Rock, it's a one-way down. So I'm imagining on the bottom street near the storage places, that's a two-way, and right at that corner, you need to put a one-way do not enter veil. So the people that are coming in this way, don't go up the one-way, that's the only thing I can envision.
Does it need to be, does it not stay, does it still need to be a one-way? Somebody probably asked for it, like, 70 years ago, saying little kids running around or something or other.
It is, I will say this, it's a, it's a narrow road, and there's houses on both sides of the rock, so it is a little bit. Maybe that's why it was done in the past, I don't know the history of why people have one ways and not the other road, but anyways. I want to just take a look at that situation too.
Alright, Matapoisette Road, stop ahead. You travel Matapoisette. Matapoisette Road, stop ahead, I'm assuming that's the end of Matapoisette?
This is where, again, this is all news to me, I, I've never had any.
Hold on, we've got our.
There's, you go to the intersection, I, this is terrible, I don't know the names of the roads, but there, it comes really quickly into Matapoisette Road, so there should be a stop ahead sign, that's what someone was telling me.
So Hathaway Road, after the Big Ben on Hathaway Road?
You, you could tell me, I don't really.
Oh, no. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I travel on this road every single day.
Yeah.
I know when to stop, there are some trees on the corner where Hathaway turns into Mendel and Matapoisette that if you're going extremely fast, you're gonna have an issue. But knowing what the speed limit is around that corner, I mean, maybe I'm speaking from experience and literally driving through that stop sign every day.
I mean, you gotta, you gotta look at it like you, you don't drive it every day.
I'm sorry.
No, no, but that's where you should look at them, is you don't drive it every day, so if somebody coming up to it, don't know it's there. You know, usually we have problems, like, you know, like, again, it'd be a bunch of accidents or, or reasoning for it, you know? We put them ones up on when, and even the flasher ones, which, I'll tell you what, since we put them, we ain't had no issues, no more accidents, so. But then we're getting ongoing accidents on both sides, on main street and middle road. So, you know what I mean, that's another option, is putting, you know, the flasher ones, because they can see them from far away if, if it's an issue, but again, that's something I'd like to talk to the chief or something about. If there was issues with accidents and stuff like that. Or, you know, I mean, really, I mean, you say no, but I mean, I, you know, really, you gotta kind of look like.
He just, he just admitted that he drives through every day.
He drives through it.
Do you mind if I show you?
Yes, please.
On my computer? Alright, it's right here.
That may be a situation too, where, like Dan said, I might have to just take my daily, daily drive.
I think they were talking about right here. This intersection right here.
Yeah, okay.
It comes quick, okay, we're on the same page.
It only comes quick if you're going above the posted speed.
It's where I'm at, shop.
Of 30.
I didn't, these were questions I have, will you, will you have a sound?
I think that's what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, I'll.
Go take a look at it.
I'm gonna actually drive into that intersection.
Carefully.
Without the, I gotta go to work mode on, and I'll actually pay attention to it. I haven't missed a stop sign, just so gentlemen know.
But again, that's, that's something you don't have to really, it's just a stop ahead sign.
Okay, take a look at it, you guys.
You know, I mean, that's really.
You guys can talk about it.
I can do that on my way home, Dan.
Okay. Like, if you're gonna put one of them up, that's not something that you have to really be that.
It's the official ones that can result in tickets that we have to worry about.
Alright, now.
Here we go.
The doozy of all doozies, water and sewer rates, but before we do this, Dan, again, shout out to Kathy, I know today, yesterday was her last day.
Yeah.
Sorry for that.
A big, big loss.
Yeah. But, you know, at some point, we wanna talk to you about, like, you're the department, and what you think you need, and what you know, there's a there's a slot there, there's money associated with it, and there's a way, there's a way that we can give you some additional help, like, you know, technical help, and maybe there's something else we can do there from an office manager, whatever it is. But anyway, shout out to Kathy for water and sewer rates, I know Kevin's been involved in this stuff, really at the mercy of the city of Bedford, so you guys can come at it.
Alright. So, the latest we just got actually was from Ubeffet, so there was an increase of 46 cents on the water and 22 cents on the sewer. I had some papers that Kathy did earlier, and, and she gave us, you know, different, I don't know if you got that, Kevin, do you?
Yeah, I did have board calls, everybody's got it.
So, the only thing with that that I noticed is that was based on the current rate of Ubeffet, not with the 46 cents and the 22 cent increase on that. So, if you even, you really can't use that as a, as a number to go off, because that was based on the rates before the increase, before the 46 and the 22 cents. If you look on the top of it, it's based on current rate, 26 buddy usage from Ubeffet. Which, that's basically, and again, we, we, you know, I've worked with Kathy on this too, but she does, she's been doing it for years, I've been out in the field, so. But prior, I, I know we always used to budget off of either three-year or five-year. But prior, I'm, I know we always used to budget off of either three-year or a five-year patent on it and lots to do with weather and stuff like that. And, uh, this year was dry, so we're definitely going to have a little more water usage, I can see coming forward. So that's, based on that, Kevin, I don't know what, what you looked at and so like going that fifty cents, that's basically what it's going to be no, you're going to have no surplus if we went up just fifty cents, because you're only really going four cents above the, the rate from the city. And the sewer, the sewer again was based on the covered rate and that went up twenty-two cents. So again, I mean, she went, she went on fifty on this, with a fifty cent increase, we only had like a thousand percent surplus. And on sewer, but that would be even less than that because you now would get cut it.
Yeah, I see what's going on. I mean, I was really, I'm thankful I got these spreadsheets.
Me too.
From Jamie Lynn.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have, we don't have Kathy to do this, right?
Yep.
Earlier on, it's not really, right? We would sit down, we'd take the last three years, average everything now and say, okay, this is what we need to do. We all digest the numbers and make sure we have good numbers, but.
Which I, I believe she did that in this, Kevin, she did all the analysis, week for three-year. You know what I mean, so this, which, these papers that we've got, was she definitely did all that analysis.
No, I understand that, but the problem is, is if the city, option number two on water, let's, let's talk water first, Dan.
Okay, yeah.
With the green box, right? So option number two is a forty cent increase, but the city went up six cents. Right?
Correct.
So I'm six cents in deficit, even though it looks like you're going to generate fourteen thousand bucks in surplus. Well.
Correct.
And then I took the liberty to run a fifty cent increase, which is the green box with Jamie Lynn, our assistant town accountant, because I didn't think any of that was suitable for us to do, which it hurts. It's going to hurt, but we need to do what we need to do to stay whole, we can't have a shortfall, right? And I understand the, the line item in the water budget, the sewer budget, city of New Beffet water bills, city of New Beffet sewer bills is a floating number. But I think that's when she does the budget, she looks at the previous three years and does a calculation and plus whatever the increase is, she puts in that percentage increase to float that number up, right? Because of the increase, you know, with the budget. So she's got the budget there.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I, the one I got, when she might have done, you think she's got the, uh.
Only because the budget, Dan, the budget's right.
Yeah.
See the budget number, it says estimated billing income?
Yeah.
And then it floats down below as well.
Yeah.
So.
It's long, because when did these rates come in from New Beffet?
Last March.
Oh, so they've been in for a while, okay, so she already had it.
So I'm thinking that's because she did, she did budget.
Okay.
Right? That's what she's trying to cover is budget.
Correct.
So she anticipated that rate increase when we set budget in June, the March increase is factored into what she put in, paid to the city of New Beffet water bills slash sewer bills for each budget, right?
Yep.
So I'm thinking she did capture that.
Okay.
I've never gone to one of these pieces of papers where she's, she's been wrong.
No, no, but I've been in the past, like I said, we've been, we were waiting, waiting, waiting to get.
She's got budget here, though, we've, we finalized that this is a budget number right here.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it says you can see fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget less the sixty thousand reserve.
Yeah.
On the top part. So she's capturing a budget in that increase and paid to city of New Beffet water bills is there. So she anticipated rate increase, I would have to imagine at that point.
Yeah, a lot of times she'll just put in like, you know, whatever, uh, uh, six or eight percent increase on New Beffet and not, because we were waiting for the rates, that's why I'm really wondering when these rates came in, but if they came in back then.
So rates, the city of New Beffet always sent us this rate sheet. They're usually pretty good by March because we pretty much had stat and stone, I think it was in one of the old interministerial agreements that says by March, we need these numbers and that was done from the previous board of public works. Um, so that we can anticipate what we need to do for budgeting, right? So y'all guess is as good as mine, I'm not going to, I'm going to.
I can, you know, I still can contact her and call her and ask her just to make sure.
We don't have to bore on this tonight, correct?
Well, that's, I mean.
It's going to be Friday?
Because the billings, the billings coming out next month, right?
So if, if Saltman won't have, um, as a chairman, has a, a meeting at one o'clock for the board of selectmen schedule um, to do some RFQ stuff for the police chief in Sesmond Center. So under that, if you can get back to us, we'll put, just chairman.
Yeah, we'll put on the agenda.
Water and sewer rates back on the agenda for Friday at one o'clock. We'll have a, a meeting at one o'clock, he's still off at one o'clock.
I was just going to double check and make sure, Kevin, I, you know, I mean, because it says based on the covered rates or is that?
Rather not put on something tonight, you can do it on Friday.
Yeah.
And then get it right.
Just because it, it hurts up, it hurts up, right, where we're going?
I know.
And based on what you're saying, it's going to hurt even more.
Correct.
And I don't want to hurt anybody anymore.
Correct.
And this is a necessity because basically we're being pitched by the city, right? So I get it, we need to go up, we need to cover our costs, but I'd rather not go up any more than what is projected here. Right? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So if you can get that dialed in and get back to us.
I will.
And just say, spreadsheets are good?
Yeah.
Other than them, good. Alright, sounds good.
Thank you.
Sorry to waste your time.
Just re, just remember, I'll, I'll give you a call tomorrow, see where you're at, because we'll go look at morning side and look at all that to get some counts for the board. But we also got to do, um, Hartley, right?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, guys, have a good night.
You too, and Dan, I'll get in touch with you at the end of the week, once I touch base with the chief and we'll, I'll have him contact you about the signage too.
Alright.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Gentlemen, if there's nothing else, other than we're going to do a meeting Friday at one o'clock to do some police items and we'll now do DPW slash water rates. Anything under announcements, I'm sure you got something.
Yes, just, uh, uh, thank you to Andrew Chopper, my annual Heckman Job Parade, even though it was a complete washout, I still had a blast hanging out with you guys throwing candy at people and, uh, seeing how many people were actually outside, were tenting their driveway, enjoying it and having a good time in rain gear, like the rain wasn't even there. I'm glad Andrew decided to still go forward with it, I had an excellent time and, uh, Andrew, keep up the good work. And, uh, Apple Peach Festival was also a blast on Saturday, uh, Sunday was a little wet, so I chose not to, uh, spend more than five minutes there, but, um, it seemed like it went pretty well for the weekend. Uh, so congratulations to them as well.
Yeah, kudos to the Chopper family, I know Mike was out there too, um, with his son Andrew. Um, and I'm glad Mr. Inkley's the one that acknowledged that he was throwing candy at people. I was throwing candy to people. So if any of you were pegged off the head, that was Mr. Inkley or was not Mr. Warner or myself, we were throwing at two people. Neither here or there, Mr. Chairman, if I could just touch base, like, because I didn't have an opportunity to do it um, for the cruise night, it was an incredible night, it was jam-packed, record number of cars, roughly a hundred and eighty cars on cruise night, I'd like to put a, a big thank you, um, to police department for all their support and their help for the cruise night. Um, most importantly, fire EMS for their cooperations, EMA department, as, as always, they've always played a crucial role in cruise night. So to all of you folks, thank you very much for your support and your help. Um, it was, it was an incredible night, it was a jam-packed night, a lot of people had a great time. Uh, we're trying to figure out if that's still going to be the place to do it, I brought it up with the schools. Some people say it's a good idea, not such a good idea because it's been tradition, we can have that conversation moving forward. But to Sydney Viveras, uh, administrative assistant in my office, in our office, that helped me do the printing for Matt Lopes, to get the word out, to everybody ordering the Magnes and, and designing that for me. Kudos to you, Sydney, for doing that again. Um, and anybody else that I've missed, I, I apologize. Anybody else that's out there, thank you all very much for an extremely successful sixteenth anniversary with cruise night. It was a huge success, thank you all, God bless.
Last thing I want to say about Apple Peach, what you guys said, tenfold. Um, but also, uh, appreciate some of our senior, our older police officers working details. I think it was really important to have the Christian Patch out there and Font and Cap Card, Kenville. Uh, thought it was really good, good to see that, really good leadership, so thank you, gentlemen, for that. And with that, my motion to adjourn.
Still move second?
Others in favor?
Aye.